Let me just say this, I'm honored to be here. I mean that sincerely. I thank God for... Now, I don't do this too... I usually have my Bible. I'm old enough now, I still use pencil and paper. You know, I stood up in class one time in Caris and I said, "Now..." I held up a pencil. I said,[28.51][28.54]"Now, some of you young people don't know what this is." I said, "This is a pencil. It has lead on one side and rubber on the other," you know? So, I like electronics, but I have to learn from my grandchildren how to use them. But anyway, and I just want to echo what Billy said, is that we're so grateful in this season of our lives that we can serve in Andrew Womack Ministries in Caris as Andrew and Jamie are the custo... I like to say it this way, they're the custodians of the vision. It's the vision of the Lord. We're all... It's all in us and what the Lord's saying and we're part of it. And so, they give... So, at that level, you know, they're the custodians in the vision. And where Billy is the CEO, they give that proper oversight to that vision. And but it comes all... As it comes down, the functionality of the vision is here. You know, fruit grows on the... Comes on the branches, not on the bark of the tree. So, you take care of the orchard, that's your job, then the fruit falls off the tree. You know, Jesus said, "I am the branch." So, He gave a living example of how to bear fruit. He said, "Now, I'm the vine, you're the branches. You're gonna be just like me." And He's the... The Bible says that He's the firstborn among many brethren. So, if there's a firstborn, that implies there's a second born, a third born. I don't know what number I am, but I am one of the born ones. And, you know, and so, thank God for that. Amen? So, I'm just gonna give you a few scattered remarks, talk out of my heart. Then, if something goes off inside of you, you take it and go preach it and teach it like it ought to be preached and taught. But I appreciate so much the opportunity to serve with people of the caliber of Andrew and Jamie Womack and Mike and Carrie Pickett and Billy and Becky. And I'm just... I do mean that sound like, you know, like the banana said, "I am glad to be one of the bunch." You know, that's... That's... But I had some couple of things in my heart I wanted to share with you. And we'll take a text here in a little bit, so we'll be legal, you know? But I just want to talk to you out of my heart. I love Africa, first of all. I just want to tell you that. I've been coming to Africa since 1985. And I might look like I'm a lily-white American, but my heart's pretty much, at least half of it's African. You know, it's... I've been... I love Africa. I love Uganda. And, you know, I know that God does, and I really have an affinity... You know, with your children. I've got four children, ten grandchildren. You know, we've been married... We're kind of saying... He's Billy Wayne, I'm David Wayne. He's been married 50 years. I've been married 50 years. We've known each other for 50 years. And so, I thank God for that kind of relationship. But, you know, when your children are born, the first... I remember I had my first one that was born. I thought, "Man, I couldn't... I don't have the capacity to love anyone more than I do this one, our first son." We couldn't have children. The Lord healed us. And, boy, I was just so thrilled. When he was born, I was running down the hallway of the hospital with my hands in the air, praying in tongues. They had to chase me down to tell me if it was a boy or a girl. You know, and but God had told me, talk about that pragma. He told me before he was born, said, "You'll have a child. His name... He'll be... It'll be a son, and you'll name him Sean Philip Briggs." And so, that's what we did. And the lady, I didn't know, she wrote it down, said, "I'm gonna find out if he's a true prophet or not." And so, thank God, you know, it came to pass. But, but the whole point was, my heart was so filled, I didn't think I had the capacity to love another child. But I discovered something. Then Stacy came along, my oldest daughter. And man, I tell you, well, oh, she might have been ugly to somebody. She beautiful to me. I'm in the born... You know, newborn babies are not pretty. That's just a lie. You tell them, "Oh, that's a beautiful baby." No, that's an ugly baby. That's, you know, but to you, I mean what I'm talking about. That's a beautiful baby. You know, so... And all of a sudden, I found out something. The capacity in my heart began to grow. That God has created us to increase capacity because He does not want to be limited in His expression. And so, for Him to express what He wants in your life, He gives you the capacity. So, if you have the... If anything that God wants to teach you, you have the capacity to learn. Anything God wants to give you, you have the capacity to receive. And your ability to be open to receive what God wants to teach you or give you is the capacity you give God to express Himself through you unlimited. And so, you know, that's... So, then Stacy was born. All of a sudden, I saw I had two. And then came Michael, and then came Trina, you know, then... And I realized, how many children does God have? And He said, "He carries you around," and He said, "Your photo is in His hand." He's got, you know, baby pictures. And He said, "A mother will forget her suckling child before I'll forget you." You know, you watch a mother, there're gonna be 10, 15 children in there. And if one child cries, that mother knows the cry of their child in the midst of 30 or 40 children. It's amazing. But what I discovered about that was, I love all my children equally different. Amen? It's not that you don't love them equally, but that's the way God is. There's favor that comes on your life that's unique to you. That doesn't mean God loves someone else more than He loves you. He loves us all equally. He's no respecter of person in redemption and relationship, but He is a respecter in gifting, calling, and placement. You were born an original. Don't die a copy. You know, the thing is, is I can never do what Andrew Womack does, but he can't do what I can do. It has nothing to do... And that's what I want you to... One thing I want you to say, when Billy was talking about that uniqueness of pragma, it just went off of me. So, a couple of things I want to just say about that in practical ways, is that in God's economy, that God loves us all equally different. So, if we were all to close our eyes right now without going to sleep, and we begin to look in prayer, and we're imagining the throne of God, you know, his hair is white as wool, his eyes aflame of fire. He stands in the midst of seven colan candlesticks with seven stars in his hands. He speaks. It's a settlement in rushing waters. And you begin to see that awesomeness of God, and you go to talk to Him in prayer. One thing you don't see is somebody standing in line in front of you. It's amazing in the capacity of God, the... He has billions of Christians around the world praying at the same time, but you have His undivided attention. You don't have to wait in line, that His attention is on you. So, you're uniquely, you're fearfully and wonderfully made. Turn to somebody and look at them, say, "I'm God's favorite child." And so, you know, you have to believe that. So, I just want to give you a couple of scriptures, a couple of practical things I believe will help you in this. And I don't know, you get my age, you say something more once, you know? So, but God's delivered me from the fear of repetition. You know, He said, He told us the same thing, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. I guess He figured we wouldn't catch it the first time, right? So, so... But I want to talk to you about the unique... The uniqueness of who you are in that process of what God's speaking to you and what you're doing, is that you are totally unique. So, God carries you in His heart. And one of the... And in carrying you in His heart, He loves us equally different. You are unique. And nobody can take your place. Anybody can take your ministry if you won't do it. That's what it said about Judas. It said, "Let his place be left desolate, but let his bishop wreak another take." So, the point is, Jesus said this. He said, "If your eye offend, they pluck it out. If your hand offend, they cut it off." And He wasn't talking about going and mutilating yourself. But what He was saying, He said, "It's better to go to heaven maimed than to hell whole." And the point He was talking about was that you are so fearfully and wonderfully made. You are completely unique to God, and nobody can take your place, but somebody else can take it because ministry belongs to the Lord. And so, if... So, there's something that if we... God's gonna get it done. But I believe He wants to get it done through you. And when He's talking about that graveyard, I don't want to pass this earth with dreams still in my heart, unaccomplished. I don't want them to say, "Well, here he lies. Here lies Jed. He woke up dead. You know, here he is. He's in the grave." But that person did not fulfill what the Lord had for him. I want to live out my dreams. So, I was stirred. I really do want to go bathe in my pragma. I just, you know, that's... But let me just say it this way. Let me give you a couple of scriptures and just talk about this for just a moment. What time do we stop? It's seven now. Seven twenty? Seven fourteen? Forty? Okay. I just want to make sure. If I don't land the plane, grab me. Would you do that? Okay? But let's start. The Bible says in Timothy... I'm just gonna... I'm gonna make these references, and then we'll look at something. Bible says in Timothy, "In a great house..." How many believe that we're part of a great house? AWM Caris is a great house, your family. "In a great house, there are vessels of honor and vessel of dishonor." And He said, "You can purge yourself and become a vessel of honor, fit and able for the master to use. It's the choice that you have." So, in this great house, this great family, this great economy... I want everybody to say, "Economy." In this great house, there are certain vessels, but God says, "You can determine what kind of vessel you are, fit for the master's use." And so, with that understanding, I want you to go to John 14, verse 1. It says, "In my father's house..." That word "house" is the word "oi kia" or "oi khas." And that means, "In my father's family." "In my father's house," singular, one house. Everybody say, "One house." "In my father's house are many mansions," plural. Is there any builders here? Anybody's ever built anything? Let me ask you a question. How many mansions can you get inside of one house? So, that's not just talking about your cabin in the corner of glory when you die. Your pie in the sky and the sweet by-and-by, but it's also talking about your steak on the plate before it's too late. You know, we're talking about here. "In my father's family," in that oi khas, in that oi kia. And that's where we get the word... Oi khas is where we get the word "oikonomia," which means economics. When Jesus said, "I must be about my father's business," when he was 12 years old, it's the same word, house, business, oikonomia. So, God has a business. It's a family business called Almighty Sons and Daughters. It's a family business. It's a great commission. We're gathered together. God has a purpose. He has a destiny in the dispensation of the fullness of time. He gathers all men unto Himself. How many know that God wants us to bring people to Him? Jesus is the treasure in heaven, but people are the treasure of the earth. And God wants the treasure. God loves people. Short people, tall people, fat people, skinny people, ugly people, pretty people. God loves people. Amen? And so, God so loved the world, right? The ethnos, the people. God so loves Ugandans, Americans, Asians. He so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son. Now, I don't know if you know this or not, but on the open mineral market today, I am probably worth, if you boil me down to my mineral value, I'm worth about $4.75 on the mineral market. But God said, "I so love you that I'll give My Son..." Jesus said, "I'll go." Because love or desire drives value. And value's what makes you liquid. Value's what makes you... That's the mechanism that we call the buy-in and the buy-out in business. What you're willing to pay to get something, and what you're willing to receive to let it go. Sometimes, we... Well, I don't know if you have them here, but we have garage sales, or yard sales, or rummage sales at home. And when you go to someone's garage sale, you go there, what they bought for $100, they'll sell, or 100 shillings, they'll share... They'll sell for two shillings because they'll reprioritize. Value is on a sliding scale. Value is driven by desire or love. And so, God so loved us that we might not be worth much on the open market, but because God loved us, He was able to get liquid, and He was able to send His Son to pay and purchase for what He desired. And so, turn to somebody and say, "You're worth a whole lot." So, "In my father's house," not "my father's family," right? I love this scripture because as Jesus began to teach, it got the disciples real confused. Because He said, "In my father's house," and then it cleared up for him, "are many mansions," plural. So, He's not talking about... This is not a literal thing. He's talking metaphorically here. "In my father's family," how many are part of the family of God? "My father's house, there are many mansions," or temples. How many believe you are the temple of God? So, "In my father's house, there's many temples. There's many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you." He said, "And I go to prepare a place for you, that where I am, you may be also." And so, when He's talking about this placement, this gathering, this... He was saying, "Look, in the father's family, Almighty Sons and Daughters," everybody say, "I'm in the family business." And so, it says, "In my father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you, that where I am, you may be also." That word "mansion" is the word "monet," which means like a sword fits in a scabbard. So, here's what I want to say, is I fit with you some way. I don't know how I fit with you. I don't know if I want to fit with you, but I fit with you some way. So, when He was talking in Ezekiel 37 about the bones and the rattling, you realize there was a dislocation for relocation. So, there was a transplanting that was taking place because when bones aren't connected, they dry up. They atrophy. But when they get in the right place and they get connected, there's no life in order, but life comes out of order. You know, when Jesus created Adam, He squeezed him out of the dust of the ground. Adam had everything necessary to be alive. He had all the systems. He had a circulatory system. He had an endocrine system. He had a respiratory system. He had a skeletal system. How many know you're full of systems? And when He created the earth, when He brewed it on chaos, God is not the author of confusion. He likes order. When He brewed it on it, there's a solar system. There's photosynthesis. You know, I don't have to understand all the laws of photosynthesis, but I can still eat salad. I don't know how a brown cow eats green grass and gives white milk, but I can still eat cereal. So, I'm... But the point is that God is a God of order. He's a God of systems. And it's like, whether it's business or whatever, structure is important to God. And so, there's that same... So, there's no life in order, but life comes out through order. Then God breathed into Adam the breath of life, the ruach of God, and man became a living soul. And what God did when He created Adam, in the image, the direct imprint of God, and the likeness is the manner of life, God extended who He was in His nature into Adam. Man fell. Jesus redeemed us. So, God is triune, but there's really a fourth part of... Fourth part of God. I'm not trying to make God quad, but that is, your spirit's alive unto God because you share in that nature. So, the full expression of God is that He extended Himself in creation into you, and you can procreate. You are alive unto God. Turn to somebody, say, "He's talking about me right now." So, how many know that that's the truth? So, in redemption, so what I want you to see in that is that, "That in my father's house, there are many mansions." So, the full expression of Christ is not found in one person. The fullness of the expression of Christ is found in the collective whole of the body of Christ, the ecclesia, the called-out ones. So, if I want to see a true, full expression of Jesus, I don't want it missing any part. That's why you go to Caris. That's why you attend school. Because you're coming to a place of revelation, to where you see where you fit. Amen? Now, this is important because I'm just kind of stirred about this. Talk practically about this for just a moment. "In my father's house are many mans..." I'll try to get past verse 1. "In my father's house are many mansions. If it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you." He says, "So, you fit," right, "in the body." And He said, "I prepare a place, a topas." That word "place" means a position of rule. It also figuratively means an opportunity. So, what He's saying is, "Look, you fit in the family. You're part of the family. You're uniquely and fearfully, wonderfully made, and being connected in the family together, in your right place, bone to bone." Then life is coming through you, He said, "But also, you have a topas." Now, as a son and daughter of God, right, through grace in Christ, you have a position. You're seated in heavenly places. How many believe that? You're saved by grace through faith. It's the gift of God, not a works list any man should boast. So, everything necessary, you have Jesus bought it. He redeemed us. We're not earning our way to heaven. How many know positionally, that's who you are? But that's not what... That's not how you manifest. That's not how you show up. That's your position. God wants the unseen intention of God to become a seen event in your life. And so, God wants to express Himself through you. So, we know who we are positionally, but we gotta show up. We have to manifest. For this purpose was the Son of God manifest, that He might destroy the works of the devil, put the earth under new management. And so, the issue becomes, is not just where I'm seated in Christ, but understanding how I can manifest Christ, so someone can see the unseen God through me, because Jesus said, "As the Father sent me, so send I you." Turn to somebody and say, "I am a sent one." And so, when you're sent, you're a part of the apostolate. It doesn't matter your environment. I want you to listen to me. You should never let your occupational environment define your spiritual prowess, your giftedness. You're not identified by your gift. And what I want you to... I was in a prayer line one time. I was working a prayer line one time, and there was a lady over there, and she was crying. And it wasn't because she's being blessed. She was real nervous. And I walked over and I asked her. I said, "What's the problem?" And she said, "Well, my husband just told me that he feels called to be a pastor. And I'm scared because I don't know that I can be a pastor's wife." I looked at her and I said, "You can't." She looked at me. I said, "You cannot marry an adverb, an adjective, or a description. You marry a man. You don't marry a gift." I said, "No more than you can be a truck driver's wife. No more than you can be a mechanic's wife. You're not identified by your occupation. That's the place of your expression. You're identified by who and what you are in Christ." So, just relax and realize, you married a man, you married a woman. Now, that identifier occupationally might change the rhythm of your life and what you do. If you're married to a truck driver, how many know... How many know that if the truck driver's gone, it changes the way you do home? So, there are different things in your expression and your giftedness that you do that alters some of the ways you live, but that's not what qualifies you. So, how many believe you're qualified in Christ? Does this make any sense? So, the reason I said that is that in my father's house, in my father's family, Jesus was speaking. He said, "There are many mansions." He said, "I go to prepare a place for you." So, you positionally, you're a son and daughter of God. But as a son, He was fully God, fully man, but as a... But as manifesting in the earth, you have opportunity to show up. So, you become a living epistle, so somebody can read your life and see Christ through you. Jesus, in this discourse here, I thought it was real interesting. He said, "If it were not so, I would have told you." He said, "And I go to prepare a place for you." And He said, "If I go to prepare a place for you..." What did He say next? I want to use your screen too, because I didn't have my Bible here. "And if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you to myself, that where I am, there you may be also." He wasn't talking about a physical... He was a physical condition. He was talking about a placement and how you relate. He said, "Listen, I want you to know that where I am with the Father, you are with Me, in my father's family." And so, your place there, and He said, "Where I am, you may be there also." Let's just go to the next verse. He said, "And where I go, you know..." And this is where they started getting frustrated. "Where I go, you know." He said, "And also, the way, you know." What they didn't realize, they weren't... When they spent three years with Jesus, they weren't in... They weren't spending three years in the place. They were spending three years with the way. He's the way, the truth, and the life. He's not the place. He's the way to the place. The place is your place and purpose in the father's house and family. And He said, "You know..." And so, go to the next verse. I love this. Said, "Thomas..." I love Thomas. Thomas gets a bad rap. "But Thomas said to him, 'Lord, we do not know where you are going. And how can we know the way?' How many have ever gotten frustrated out of something you heard taught? See, they weren't born again yet. They were in a monotheistic society. They were from the Jewish family and culture. And they looked at Jesus as not the despotes, the supreme controller. They looked at Him as the kurios, the great teacher, the master. And so, that's why when Thomas was all conflicted later on, you read about him, whenever he stuck his hand in the side of Jesus and his fingers, he made this declaration. 'My Lord and my God,' he made the connection. 'My kurios, my respected venerate one, has become my supreme controller.' I connected the dots. Jesus, your God. And so, what happened, He said, "We don't know where you're going, and we don't know the way." And Jesus said, let's just go to the next verse. Jesus said to him, "I am what?" "The way, and the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father, the place, except through Me. I'm the way to the place." So, your relationship in Christ, in redemption, in the family of God, is what positions you to find your purpose in the family of God as a part of the divine enterprise, God's family or His business, the oikonomia, the economics of God. So, whether you realize it or not, you are a part of the economy. And you're a part as an ambassador of changing this earth's economy to harmonize with God's economy. That's the purpose of the kingdom. Are you still with me? So, let's just... I like being able to read the book, the Bible on these screens. That's amazing. So, I love this. They still started getting frustrated. "If you've known me," He said, "If you had known me, you would have known my father also. And from now on, you know Him and have seen Him." He said, "He said to Philip, 'Have I been so long a time with you, and you have not known me? I am my father one.'" Because they said, "Well, just show us the Father. We'll be satisfied." All this talking, "We don't understand all this talk. Just show us the Father." He said, "Have I been with you so long, and you have not known me, Philip?" And so, what he was trying to do in that transition of life is to place them relationally, that what he was gonna do through the death, burial, and resurrection of Christ, he was placing them. He was speaking of their future, that in this family of God, when I put life into the family, into the church, into the ecclesia, to the called-out ones, He said, "What you're gonna know, you see Me, you seem the Father." He said, "You're not gonna see Me anymore, and my Father and I will come and will make our home inside of you." That was his whole premise. And so, I shared that with you to say this. How many of you really believe... I could spend all day there, but I won't. But I want to set the premise that we are in the family. How many believe we are in the family of God? You are a son and daughter by position, and you have a work to do, and you have a purpose. You have a pragma, where I'm gonna go home and bathe in it tonight. But a lot of times, people disqualify themselves because they don't see them in their connectivity. They disqualify themselves instead of qualify themselves. So, in Ephesians... So in Ephesians, chapter four, just read the whole Bible. It's a great book. I recommend it to anybody. It's just, underline every line, because I only like, you know, I only underline the good parts, but they're all good. In Ephesians, chapter four, how come I'm in Acts here? Oh, you gotta hit search, don't you? There we go. Look at there. I'm doing it. Ephesians, chapter four, verse one. Paul is speaking about basically this same thing, of finding your place in the Father's family. And how do you fit there and undiscover your identity, your purpose, your call, your reason for being, not just to get a ticket to heaven? Amen? So he said, "I therefore, the prisoner of the Lord, beg you or beseech you that you walk worthy," everybody say worthy, "of the vocation." When I said, "Don't let your occupational environment define your spiritual prowess." That means whatever you are spiritually is not defined just by a singular thing we think about in church. Like, well, if I preach, teach, prophesy, I carry my Bible under my shoulder, and I, and, and I, and I do great works. That's the real spiritual or supernatural stuff. But this other stuff is secular. It has no place, and it has no meaning. If you believe that, you will miss your occupational environment where you're really supposed to express who you are in the spirit. Because if you're a pastor, pastor. If you're a deacon, deacon. If you're an elder, elder. If you're, you know, whatever you are, you can do that in whatever occupational environment you're in. Don't limit yourself. Don't minimize or maximize any environment. The, the secret is, in the Father's family, get in your environment. That's what God wants. And in that environment, in the kingdom, whether it's in the political world, whether it's in the teaching, education, preaching, in the church, wherever it is the expression, the gifts and calling of God are without repentance. And so that expression will happen in whatever environment God places you in. Does that make any sense? So if you read there, he said, he said, he said, "I'm asking you to walk worthy of your vocation." I want you to, I want you, I'm gonna do this quickly for time's sake. Go back and you can really savor it and read it. That word vocation in the Greek is the word klasis. And that word klasis, S-I, excuse me, C-L-E-Y, I messed that up. Anyway, that means an invitation. That's where we get the word calling. There's five things that every one of you have in this play. Every believer has it. How many know we all have the same amount of muscles and, and bones, right? Now, I look, I look at this gentleman right here. He's really svelte looking, really sharp looking. I have the same amount of muscles that he has, but mine just forgot where they belong. I suffer from muscular amnesia. No, I, no, what happens is, depending on how you exercise them, they develop in a certain way. Doesn't mean he has more muscles or less. He just has them placed differently based on what he knew and he exercised. Does that make sense? It's the same way in Ephesians four. Ephesians four is not including and excluding people. He's saying, "Here's what I want you to understand," Paul said, "that every believer has an invitation." How many answered the calling, the klasis, the invitation to get saved? And you responded, right? You also have a klasis or an invitation to a purpose, to, to a function, right? So every believer is invited. You're not excluded. Look at somebody and say, "He's talking about you right now." So you have an invitation. If you go on and read, and I'm gonna do this for just time's sake. When you read through there, you're gonna discover these five things. He said, he said that you have a vocation, and I want you to walk worthy of that vocation. That word vocation is, comes also from a French derivative. And the English word, that means a career track, like a racetrack. Every one of us have a vocation, a career, a racetrack, an occupational environment God wants to put us in. And we're invited into that. You don't stumble in it. God has invited you into a place to be fruitful. Amen? And so everybody say, "I have an invitation." Then he goes on and says that everyone has a grace. I don't know why I misspell and everything. How many, how many believe that everyone has a grace? That, that word grace is, I don't know if you've ever heard of this word. It's karis or Charis. Everyone has a karis, a grace. And that's why Paul said, "I am what I am by the what? Grace of God." That word grace is, means a favor, a divine unmarried favor. God's willingness to get involved in our life even though we don't deserve it. It's not based on that merit. It's based on God's placement. God sets people in the body as it pleases Him. You're handpicked, hand-chosen, you're called, and if you respond to that klasis, that invitation, many are called, few are chosen, is that you can be appointed and placed wherever you yield to the call. And so every one of us have a grace. We have a karis. We have a favor. And you find favor through surrender and submission. So how many believe that everybody has a grace? You have a divine favor. That's what mercy is. Mercy, you have a throne of grace, a mercy seat. Mercy is the outworking of God's grace. It's God's grace in motion. It's putting grace to work in your life. So how many believe that you're graced to do things? So, so I don't want someone else's grace. I want my grace. So if you learn to get content, you won't get nervous or anxious. And, and so, you know, that's why Paul said, "Comparing yourselves with yourselves, you become unwise." So we all have a, so everybody, everybody say, "I have an invitation, and I have favor." So God gives you supernatural. Everybody in here is sitting with supernatural favor inside of them, a grace in them to do what God's called them to do. And then he said, he said, he goes on and talks about, "We all have a measure." Right? He said, "We have this vocation. We have this calling. We have this grace, and we have a measure." Paul, that, that word measure is the word metron. And it means a limited portion. In other words, everybody has a limited or a defined portion. Paul said, "I do not press beyond my measure. I'm content within the limited portion God set me in. I have a measure." I don't, he said, "I don't build on another man's foundation. I don't have to come steal something from you because I'm busy developing what's in me. I don't have to be jealous over what's in you. I'm jealous over what's in me. And I have something to give." Turn, say to somebody, "I have something to give." So you might have been someone else's mistake. You might have been born in the heat of passion, in the back of a bush somewhere, and, and it's, oh, no. You might have been someone else's mistake, but you're God's own purpose. Just ask Jephthah. Jephthah was considered a bastard child, but yet God said, "If you want deliverance, you go find Jephthah." What sometimes people reject, God doesn't reject. It doesn't matter how you got here. When you were separated from your mama's belly, God had a purpose for you while you were being formed. Regardless how you get there, that's why I don't believe in abortion. Because the Bible says about Paul, Paul said, "When it pleased God, He separated me from my mama's belly, and Jesus said to Ananias, 'You go lay hands on Saul at Tarsus and show him he's a chosen vessel unto me, and he's got to do the things I'm calling him to do.'" You're a chosen vessel. You're born by, not by accident. You're not a mistake. You're God's own purpose. Right? And so everybody has a measure, a metron, a limited portion. And so I can't do what Billy Epplehart does, even though we've known each other for 50 years. If I tried, it doesn't work so well. But why are we connected? That's the secret. So here's the deal. He said, "Not only do we have a klasis, we have a grace, we have a measure, we also have a gift or a doria or a charisma, depending on what you're looking at." So how many believe there are gifts? Gifts are simply abilities. You have giftings plural, calling singular. You have an invitation. So not only are you invited in the body of Christ, not only do you have a grace that's God's giving you that's a favor, not only does every believer have a measure, a limited portion, but every believer has giftings. Amen? And so those giftings are equipment. It's what you're equipped with. They're divine endowments that God gives you. And in Romans 12 says, "God gives you a measure of faith to be able to, in the environment of your gift, to produce what you're gifted to produce." We all have the same measure of faith that we got saved by grace through faith. It is a gift of God. But you also have a measure of faith divinely given you by God to respond to the giftedness of service that He's put in you, whatever that is. Turn to somebody and say, "I'm gifted. And, and I have faith to perform my gift. I am well-able. I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." So I don't want to come and try to play around with your gift. I'm gonna play around with my own gift. Is this helping anybody? And so we get settled. A lot of people never get settled and produced because they're too busy chasing someone else's dream. You can use someone else's dream for an example, but you can't steal their dream. Stories are good to encourage you, but they will never give you what's yours. Is that all right? So we have, there's four things. There's one other thing that you have, and I want to talk about it. And that is a, a function or a supply. Everybody say, "Supply." So that means you have something to give. So if you read in Ephesians, I don't want to, in Ephesians four, let me get down here. So he, he's talking about this, these five things that you have. Then he interrupts himself, and he says in verse six, he said, "There's one Lord," verse five, "one Lord, one faith, one baptism, one God, Father of us all, who's above all, through all, and in you all. But unto every one," everybody say, "That's me. "But to every one of us singular is given grace according to the measure of the gift of Christ. Wherefore he is said, when he ascended up on high, he led captivity captive, and he gave what? Gifts to men." Now, this is where most of us park. He gave apostles, prophets, evangelists, pastors, teachers, right? Those are five expressions of one mantle, which is the mantle of Christ. And it's for one singular purpose. It's not that you can be a floating chess piece with fire flying out of your fingertips, and everybody's sitting you in an honored seat so you can say, "The anointing is about me." No, the anointing's to break the yoke. Has nothing to do with you. Don't be the donkey that brought in Jesus and thought they were singing Hosanna about the donkey. It's who's riding the donkey that's important. And so the issue is, these, this five-fold ministry gift, the expression of the mantle of Christ, that is the apostle. That's the fullness of the measure of the Spirit. God uses gifts of men and women that the anointing can flow through for one singular purpose. Those men are to equip the saints for useful work and ministry. That's to help all the believers discover and exercise these five things that are in them. And so my job in that part of the ministry is to make you, the F.F. Fenton translation says it this way. I love it. It says, "God has, He said, to make you instruments, to make you members of the holy fit for useful work, not instruments of error." And so He said, "Look, all that we're doing is we're trying to form you into a discovery of who and what you really have, understanding these things so you can release what you have in you to someone else." Everybody say, "I have a supply." So the point is, why, I'm not very useful unless I am releasing something, not just receiving something. Is this all right? So if you read on down Ephesians, my phone's doing the same thing yours was. It just keeps shutting off. Yeah, so, so he, so he gave these gifts, the ascension order gifts, how that he descended first, he ascended. This really speaks to what Jesus was telling him over in John 14. This is the outworking of that. In the verse 12, he said, "And the reason these teachers come, for the perfecting of the saints, for the work of the ministry, for the edifying of the body of Christ, till we all come into what? The unity of the faith and to the knowledge of the Son of God unto a perfect man." Singular. And that perfect man is Christ. The ecclesia is the full picture of Jesus. And he said, he said this, he said, that, and that's the measure and the stature of the fullness of Christ. Everybody say, "If I get connected, we'll give a full expression." That's why it's important to be planted. That's why it's important to don't think, you know, that you're the only floating piece around. That's why it's important to get planted, all those things to get connected, because you cannot express the fullness of Christ on your own. You need to be connected to some, to, to, to others. So he goes on and says, "We're speaking the truth and love." Now, I love this in verse 16. "For whom the whole body," everybody say, "fitly joined, fitly joined together and compacted." The key word there is compacted. He said, "Compacted by that which every joint supplies." How many know that you have a supply? "According to the effects you're working in the measure of every part." So the supply is within your measure. Now, that simply means this. Janay, could you help me just a minute since you're standing here? And I, I say this quickly so we wrap it up. So we have these things, and our, our job is to discover what these are, learn how they work. That's what we're doing so we can bathe in our pragma. We can have vision. But here's the thing. Paul said that I have to be able to connect to supply. And I, 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 I love this because it helped me understand connectivity. I'm connected to Bill, to Billy. Not because we're just 50-year-old friends. It was by purpose. So whether it's two days' connection or the rest of your life. Here's the thing, is that I, there's, if God has put something in Janay that belongs to me in a supply, I can't get over here and get connected to, what's your name? Julius? I can't get my supply from Julius if God's intended it to come from Janay. I don't buy my groceries at this supermarket and pay my bill at the other. Right? So what happened is, I said, "Okay, Janay, what I want you to do is I want you to follow my hand." Come on, get, Janay, follow my hand. How come he can't do that? Because it, because we are disconnected. The reason the bones can go, all, everything we're talking about here, there's something that happens in the connectivity, because there cannot be a release of supply without connection. Now, if I take Janay by the hand and I do this, it's easy because I'm given, I'm given, I'm given dominion and tyranny. I'm controlling. I'm dominating. That's not the way of Christ. And I can make him do whatever, but Jesus doesn't even do that to us. So it says, "By that which we're joined together and compacted." Now, there's, there's some kinds of compaction that's not fun. Have you ever been constipated, compacted? That's a bad thing. But what that, that same word, what that means is to press in to where you're pushing together so hard, you are joined and not disjointed. And when you're compacted, now he can follow me. I can follow him. It's not by dominion or control. It's by surrender, because it's by submission and surrender. I find the grace. I find those things that are in him. And if I'm compacted, then I release the supply. It's the way of Christ. And so the reason that we say that is, is that we, as I said, if we'll do that, we'll all come into the full stature of Christ. We don't need to be disjointed. How many ever seen somebody that's disjointed? It's sad, right? It's like, and they get atrophetic. They draw up. They can't function. If, if we don't get compacted right, that's the Christ that people see. They see, that's why Jesus said, "It's by their unity that the world will know." It's not just to get along. Unity becomes the clear and clarifying expression of Christ. That's why unity's important. That's why surrender is important, not to dominate one another, but to be connected and compacted so there can be a supply. Because when that supply flows, then what happens when people see it? They don't see a disjointed, argumentative, crazy body that can't produce. They see Jesus in His fullness, each part singularly identified in their pragma, but connected in the body, and they And they say, "Oh, that's what Jesus looks like. That's the epistle that I read, that's what I want to be a part of. I'll join that body because there's life in it." Does that make sense? And so let's, let's all stand. The reason that I wanted to share this in practical sense, guys, is that it doesn't matter if you're a businessman, a businesswoman, a teacher, an educator, a government leader, a preacher, a pro, whatever your occupational environment is. It is how you're connected in the body and that full expression, that's where Christ is seen. Jesus needs to be seen in the marketplace. Jesus needs to be seen in the church. Jesus needs to be seen in the educational system. Jesus needs to be seen in your neighborhood. And he, that, the way that is seen is through our connectivity. So I want you to look at somebody and say, "I fit with you some way. I don't know how. I don't know if I want to, but I do fit with you some way. You're worth waiting on." What did Paul say in Philippians three and 12? Paul said, "It's not though I have already obtained, or I'm already perfect," he said, "but this one thing I do, forgetting those things that are behind, I press forward to the mark of the high calling of God." He said, "I'm trying to apprehend, I'm trying to grab, I'm trying to grasp for the purpose for which I was grasped. I'm trying to lay hold of the purpose," and that's what Jesus said in John 14. He said, "I'm not the place, I'm the way to the place. You need to grasp your metron, you need to grasp your measure, you need to find your authority. The invitation you respond to shows you in the family business, your expression and supply. And it's all just as important as anybody else's." So Janay, I'm fixing to turn it over to you because we gotta quit. Come here for just a moment, I'm gonna let you land the plane for me. Is this all right? I hope this is helpful. Listen, I never lose my identity by being connected. I'm able to amplify the expression of what we are in Christ. And so what happens is this, is that, Janay, I believe everything you said about the pragma that's in you, we have those buildings. I believe that. I believe you, God, that's hearing the word of God. And here's, here's the thing, but if I'm connected with you, you're worth waiting on. So grab somebody by the hand, if you would. See, I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. I don't need Billy Eppelhart to get the fullness of Christ in my life or to do what God's called me to do. But I do need to be connected to Billy Eppelhart, because God joined us to have a full expression of what God wants to do in that collective union. And so I say, "I'm going to the next level, and I'm taking you with me. I'm gonna get mine, and I'm gonna help you get yours."